We're going to go ahead and start the meeting at 6 o'clock, even though that says 6:02. Darlene, could you go ahead and do roll call, please?
Councilmember Cervantes?
Here.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hewitt?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
We're going to go ahead and excuse him. He had some personal things going on. Okay, and let the record show that we have City Manager Cobal, City Attorney Boro, City Clerk Dritis, Finance Director Reed, I'm sorry, City Attorney Cowell, Stephanie Cowell, sorry. Planning Director Lucia, Public Works Director Monson, City Engineer Thornton, Fire Chief O'Connell, and Sheriff Captain Peterson. And Captain Peterson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We're going to go ahead with the communications from the public, and I'm going to call up Mr. Wright.
Okay, now it is. Okay, so I want to open and say Happy New Year to everybody. God bless you and your families with all good things. Hope everybody's doing good, and this will be a good year for everybody. Okay, what you have is a Press Enterprise front page article. Attached to this presentation is a Press Enterprise newspaper article appearing in 9/21/23. Addition serving Riverside and surrounding counties describing more than half of the warehouses here in Southern California are negligent in their required compliance to the state's clean air rule. Regulators at South Coast Air Quality Management District enacted the Warehouse Indirect Source Rule in May 2021 to protect our citizens from the dangerous diesel exhaust particulate emitted from project diesel trucks transporting contents from the ports to the warehouses. As you know, I've asserted for years that the negative aspects of the warehouse operational project traffic pose a concentrated threat to the taxpaying citizens, their children, elderly, sensitive receptors, who have the constitutional rights to live, to breathe clean air, and to move about freely, and expect federal, state, county, and city officials to respect and protect them. I have explained on the record that technically each diesel truck with a trailer inbound to each warehouse is the project. And with its contents, contents in the toxic pollution generated by the project is environmental and detrimental to the residents of Ranch at Calamasa, Sharon Dell, JP Ranch, Singleton Heights, plantation on the lake, young and old, their health, safety, and welfare, and future quality of life. Regulators say that 1,400 of the 2,000 warehouses have violated the air quality protection rules, holding the warehouse owners and operators accountable for noncompliance at $11,710 a day. Got to take a breath here. By spotlighting and announcing a crackdown violators of the Warehouse Indirect Source Rule, it shows that it is not speculation but evidentiary fact, and this is actually happening by existing warehouses despite the promises to comply, apparently for two years. There's no excuse for negligently putting our Southern California's citizens' lives and health at risk. Thank you, officials on the South Coast Air Quality Management District Board for enacting the Warehouse Indirect Source Rule, and thus protecting our residents' constitutional rights.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I need to get a motion to approve the agenda and consent calendar, please. I'll do so. Approve the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to business, Chamber of Commerce, comments and reports.
I was just going to say Tony's not going to be here tonight.
No, no, you're stuck with me. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Hewitt, councilmembers. My name's Heather Perry. I'm on the board of the chamber. So, for the breakfast meeting review, our January breakfast was well attended. Mike Pelley from the Brill Institute was our guest speaker. And our next breakfast meeting will be on February 13th, 7:30 a.m. at Cafe Royale. Our guest speaker will be Superior Court Commissioner Elizabeth Tucker, who just happens to be running for a judicial seat in Riverside County. Upcoming events, next Thursday is the chamber installation. We'll be having that at the Calamasa Events Center. And Senator Rosalicia Ochoa Bog will be the keynote speaker. She will be installing our new board members, and we will also be celebrating our 2023 Calamasa Community Award winners. The winners will be Citizen of the Year Ed Clark, Business of the Year Enchanted Cedar Yoga and Holistic Healing. Charitable Business will be Beaumont Cherry Valley Recreation and Park District. Deputy of the Year is Michael Hinkle, and Firefighter of the Year is Albero Cortez. Residents, reservations for the event can be made through the chamber on the website, or you can call the chamber office. Check-in starts at 5:00 p.m. and dinner starting at 6:00 p.m. As far as our membership goes, we have two new members, five members renewals, and our total is 130. Any questions for me?
Any question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. We're going to go ahead and move on to our business items. Number 10 will be done by Will.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. Senate Bill 1439 was signed into law in September of 2022 by Governor Gavin Newsom. It amended the Political Reform Act of 1974 imposing new conflict of interest rules on local officials that had only applied to local appointed officials previously, such as planning commissioners, for example. Local elected officials are now required to, one, disclose any contribution over $250 received from parties or participants in a proceeding or their agents in the 12 months prior to rendering a decision on that proceeding, for example, a land use decision. Recused, two, recuse themselves from the proceeding unless the prohibited amount of the contribution was properly disclosed and returned. And three, refrain from soliciting or accepting campaign contributions over $250 from parties, participants with financial interests, or their agents while proceedings is pending and for 12 months following the final decision. Now, this applies to both parties that are both for and against a particular decision. In order to avoid potential inadvertent conflicts of interest and subsequent recusal requirements, staff recommends establishing a campaign contribution limit of $250. Currently, the Calamasa Municipal Code is silent on campaign contributions, meaning that we default to the state limits for city elections, which for 2023 and 2024, that is $5,500. Since we are now in an election year, this item is presented as an emergency ordinance, meaning it will be effective immediately upon adoption. Staff recommends that the city adopt Urgency Ordinance Number 396 to establish a campaign contribution maximum of $250 and declare the urgency thereof. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. If you have any legal questions on this matter, Ms. Cowell will be able to assist us with that.
Any questions?
I have a question, Will. So, just by clarification, so the, as the ordinance is written, the $250 pertains to an individual or a business, right? The maximum that we can accept, or our commissioners can accept, would be $250?
That is correct, yes.
Now, there's no state law to that effect, but we're proposing this as our own city ordinance, right? Is that...
Yes, and maybe if you want to, if you want to maybe provide further clarification on that?
That's correct. There is a state law that says that we have to have this count, but it has to be strictly a good practice for, you know, to avoid inadvertent campaign contributions that will then trigger what I think is called perpetuation.
Correct, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion, please?
I'll grab it. So I'll move to adopt by title-only Urgency Ordinance Number 396 and ordinance of the City of Calamasa, California, Avondian Chapter 2.65 of Title II of the California Municipal Code to establish a campaign contribution maximum of $250 and declaring the urgency thereof.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And number 11, City Commission Appointment will be done by Darlene.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. We have a vacancy on the Parks, Trails, and Community Services Commission, and that appointment needs to be made by Mayor, excuse me, by Councilmember Molina. And so, we do have an application, and she has made her decision, so I will turn it over to her, let her make her decision. After that, we will have to adopt the resolution ratifying her appointment, and then, of course, swearing her in at the end.
Thank you. Yes, I'm very proud to appoint Rhona to the Trails, Trails Parks and Community Services Commission. If you recall, about a month or two ago, she and Ray Pakta both applied, and I selected Ray Pakta for reasons of him being here longer than dirt. He knows everything about the Trails in Calamasa, and he would have been a great committee member. And so, he then contacted the city saying that it would be difficult for him to meet the requirements of being on the committee, and he asked to withdraw, and, but he would attend meetings and be supportive and give his, offer his expertise, because, you know, as time goes by, we all kind of forget what goes on in the city. And so, I contacted Rhona, and I asked her, would she please reconsider the position that Ray would be available to her and the rest of the committee to provide his expertise? And it's, and it's, it's very, he has a lot of history here. And so, she said yes. So, I'm very pleased tonight to have Rhona step forward and take her, her pledge to, or be sworn in to be on this wonderful and most needed committee here in our city. Yes, okay. And so, I, I, I recommend that the, the city council ratify the appointment by, by a majority vote of all of us, and adopt Resolution Number 2024-02, providing the appointment.
All in favor? Do we have to do, all in favor?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, I think you will enjoy the, the committee. You'll certainly learn a lot about the city.
For me, I do solemnly swear or affirm, I do solemnly swear or affirm, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the, and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
against all enemies, foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations,
that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservations,
or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully,
and that I will well and faithfully,
discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter,
discharge the duties of which I'm about to enter.
Agreed, so, thank you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. All right, now we're going to move on to number 12, and that will be done by Will.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. When the city council approved the purchase of the new fire pumper at the last council meeting, I had mentioned that staff intended to finance the vehicle. This item presents, presents in the staff report the good faith estimate required under Senate Bill 50, which includes the principal amount borrowed, the interest rate, and the total amount paid for the life of the debt. Staff received three quotes for financing and selected the quote containing the lowest annual payment, which is $120,969.55. The lease has an interest rate of 5.67%. The lease can be paid off early, beginning in year three, with a 2% penalty. This penalty is in lieu of origination fees and a higher interest rate, so we're kind of buying down the interest rate by having that, that feature in there. Staff will evaluate on an annual basis, once that period opens, whether or not it would be in the best interest of the city to refinance or pay off the balance of the lease. The first payment will be due August 1st, and will be included in the fiscal year 2425 budget. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion, please?
I'll move to approve that the city council approve the financing with the Master Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement for the acquisition of one new Stefan Monarch G2 pumper equipment lease with the, with an acquisition cost of $925,801.73.
I'll second. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we're going to move on to number 13, Shop Local Calamasa Digital Gift Card Program Update. Will?
Thank you once again, Mayor Pro Tem, council. This item will provide you an update on the progress of the digital gift card program. As background, on November 6, 2023, the city council approved a contract with YFDE to establish a local, a shop local digital gift card program. Included was an allocation of $33,000 to fund a buy-one-get-one promotion, as well as to pay for the e-delivery fee for gift card purchases. Once staff was able to communicate to local merchants of the benefits of the program, a dozen merchants signed up to accept the card. The first card was sold on December 9th, and by January 6th, the $33,000 allocated was depleted. Between the purchased and cards and BOGO cards, over $61,000 was generated to be redeemed at local businesses. And to date, I just checked the figures just a few minutes ago, actually, over $45,000 in gift cards have already been redeemed. The staff report says 41,000, so that was, that was as of last week. In accordance with state law, the purchased gift cards funds do not have an expiration date. However, the bonus cards, since they were funded with city funds, do have an expiration date of six months after the date they were issued. And expired bonus funds that are not used will be returned to the city's YFDE account to be used for future promotions. Card holders can still use the cards at all participating merchant, merchant locations. Since there are still funds left to redeem, additional businesses can also sign up to redeem the cards if they have not already done so. And although the program has been successful, staff is not recommending additional funds to be added at this time. But people can still purchase cards, but the purchaser will not receive a bonus card and will be responsible for the e, the e-delivery fee. So, think of it like a prepaid Visa or MasterCard. Now, that means that the program will still be ongoing, and so, if council ever, if we ever want to do any promotions in the future, we certainly can do so. The program will be set up. The merchants will be able to continue to accept those cards where they already are accepted. And so, any promotions in the future will be able to get up and running very, very quickly. So, that concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions. And I just want to note that the recommended action does include council giving direction to staff for the future of the program, so any suggestions or feedback can also be discussed with this item. Thank you.
I have a question. It was a very successful program. I, I know it got off kind of a slow start, but if funds are available, I don't know what the issue is for not putting more money in, but it's a win-win. It's good for our businesses, and it's great for our citizens to have some, some extra money and share with their family. So, I would recommend, if there are funds in the future, that we do that program. It was very successful. We've done it before, and I would hope to see it again. It was, and it was well received.
I, I think that what we would probably recommend at this point is we can have the discussion for the, the budget for 2425. So, you know, under the, under our economic development line item, that could be an area where we would, we would allocate funds for it. So, we just, we will keep that in mind when we prepare the budget.
Thank you very much.
I don't have anything else. I think if we're just not going to move forward or do anything additional with it, I'm, I'm good with that.
So, I thought the timing was good around the holidays, so maybe if we do think of doing it, that'd be good timing again. I think it would also be helpful, if we could, to, to get some feedback from our local businesses and what they thought about the program, and maybe see if they have any recommendations for future implementation, or if they thought the way that, that we handled it was, was, was fine, or if there's any changes, tweaks that need to be made. And just to hear, hear how maybe their business was impacted, it'd be great to, to hear, since part of the purpose of the program was to promote local businesses and to get people to try out some of our local businesses. I think I'd like to hear, if possible, some of that feedback.
Absolutely, and there are a couple of businesses in particular that really stand out. I don't want to give the specifics, so I don't want to kind of, you know, some of that gets into kind of confidential business information. But there are certainly a couple of businesses that I want to reach out to, because it's clear that they, they figured out how to successfully navigate the program and really take advantage of it for their business. So, I'd be particularly interested in, in their feedback and see kind of what their strategy was with that. Maybe like you can, we can use it as like testimonials for the future, I think, for it too. So, that's, that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for this, or?
No, this is just receiving files, so we're good.
Okay, let's see. Item number 14, Calamasa Reader Board Sign Update. Darlene will be doing that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and council. This item is to provide council with an update on the reader board sign that's located at Calamasa Boulevard and Myrtlewood Drive, and to seek direction from council as to what the next step should be for the reader board sign. The sign was constructed and placed in 2010, was paid for with redevelopment agency funds, which we had available at that time. During the first 10 years, the sign was under an annual maintenance agreement, and any repairs needed were taken care of through the maintenance agreement. The age of the sign has now made it ineligible to be covered under an annual maintenance agreement, and the cost to repair is approximately $5,000. If you have driven by, you see the one side is very pixelated or blocked, or whatever, the other side is absolutely fine. That's the same side we've always had issues with, and have had it fixed probably three to four times while we were under that maintenance agreement. If it's repaired, inevitably, the issue will reoccur, and during the maintenance agreement term, repairs are made by the sign approximately three times for the same issues. Replacing the sign is an option. However, it would come at a cost of approximately $35,000 to $50,000, depending on what we could get and what would fit back in that sign, if there's any of the same sides that would even work. Prior to the approval of the sign by city council, the Best Walk Chinese Food and Donut House property owner entered into an agreement with the city to grant additional right-of-way along the corner in order to allow the shops at Calamasa Shopping Center to construct additional street improvements in accordance with ADA standards. The owner agreed to the dedication removal of an outdated monument sign in return for a new garden wall to match the shop's development, a temporary banner sign, and guarantee of a new sign for the Chinese restaurant and donut shop on the proposed community reader board sign. So, if you, when you see the sign, you'll see that there's a donut hut, or anyway, besides our logo and our sign, their advertising is on that sign. So, staff is taking council direction as to what the next step should be for this reader board sign, still allowing for signage for the Chinese restaurant and donut shop to remain. So, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and if there's anything that the council would like to see.
Darlene, do you know the history of why that location was chosen 10, I guess 14 years ago now?
Well, they used RDA funds, so it had to be in the RDA area, and that was one of the areas. I believe it was also for economic reasons at the time. Our Economic Development Director that was here at the time made the decision to put it there because of being on the boulevard.
Not a bad idea to have it on the boulevard, but.
Yeah, boulevard and, and Myrtlewood, because Myrtlewood has the, the nice median, and then is also, I think, the proximity to the shops across the street, which, you know, was a new development at the time. So, I think that kind of that center, that, they were kind of creating some synergy in that, in that area. That, that's speculation, my part, but that seems to kind of flow and make sense with what was done there.
I think, yeah, maximum visibility is what, what we want. And, I mean, if it's for advertisement for local businesses, it's one thing, but I think it also, as it serves for promoting and, you know, informational things going on in the city, events, activities, and things like that, so.
Right. When we, when they first approved the sign, it was decided that they would not advertise businesses on the sign just to keep the city from looking like the city was, you know, favoring any one business over another, so we kept that out of that. So, it mainly just serves for informational information, city, library, county, whatever is available.
But there's nothing to preclude us from doing that, moving forward with a new sign or something like that, if we opt in that direction.
No, and as a matter of fact, I would, there's an example. The city of Norco, if you drive, if you get off of I-15 and Sixth Street, if you go east on Sixth Street, they have a, they have an overhead sign that's owned by the city, and local businesses do advertise on that sign.
Any more comments? Yeah, I, we were very few residents back at that time, and now there are so many people. The issue for me is that it's so low, I would, I'm surprised it hasn't caused traffic accidents because people want to stop to see what it says. You really have to pull in, grab a donut and coffee, and read the sign. So, if, if we, if we replace it or improve it, I'd like to maybe see it elevated so that you can see more of it. But it's, 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 it's a nice add to that little corner.
Not just elevate it, but make it bigger, I think, too. Elevate it, yeah, would be a good idea as well.
Sean, do you have any questions? I've never really been able to see that sign very well.
Right.
I'll drive by and go, what does it say, you know? And then it glitches, and we've just had so many problems with it. I'd like to have another sign, but a lot of money, so.
And I think that right now, the price or quoting is kind of a like-for-like, right? So, same, it's just replacing the electronics part of it, the structure. I think, I believe the structure's the same, and the size is the same. It's just replacing the screens is that cost. So, if you're, now if you're talking about building another structure, making it bigger, the cost goes, does go up from there, so.
Can we maybe do a, do an ROI on it and see, like, if, if we do invest in a new sign, bigger, better one, and, and could we see how long it would take to recoup that money through advertisement and things like that, or?
Yeah, we can look at different options, and like I said, there's others, this isn't unprecedented. There are other cities that do this kind of thing, and so, we can kind of see what their thought process was and, and what their costs were associated with those, and, and also what they generate. I think that's also important, too, to understand how much money they would generate. I think also, once you're getting, you get into that realm, I think we're, I think if we talk to planning, we may have some, you know, issues with our sign, sign code that could also, we need, we'd have to look at. I think once we, if we go bigger, there probably will be some interest on digital billboards along the freeway. So, you know, again, it, it So, you know, again, it kind of, it could potentially be a slippery slope if we go that direction. Again, that's not, doesn't preclude us from looking at it. It's just off the top of my head, those are some of the concerns that might be there. So it's just some of those things that you just weigh all those things together in your decision-making. But we'll, we'll bring that in, we can certainly bring that information forward to council for their consideration.
So right now, we're not going to do anything. We don't want to spend any money on it right now.
I just had another question. Has the donut shop owner or the Chinese restaurant owner given any comments about it?
I have not.
I haven't heard anything.
They haven't approached us about it?
I think as long, I think the main thing is, is that any modification of the sign, they want to make sure signage remain. That's going to be their main concern.
Are we going to discuss this more at budget time?
It could potentially be out that, but I think we might bring this as a separate item just because there's, it could be such a wide variety or wide array of options about what the costs associated with that. So it's just something that we'll probably bring back as a separate item based on the feedback we've received tonight.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is that good? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 15. Citywide pavement management for 2023-24. Will.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. This is a continuation of our discussion from the last city council meeting regarding our pavement management program. Our city engineer, Mike Thornton, will be coming up to the podium. We have a couple of updates based on the feedback we received from the last council meeting. And then I'm going to bring up a tool on the screen here. That'll be basically the live spreadsheet of all of the different options. And so we can kind of, you know, if there's a segment that the council would like to consider, we can throw it in the budget and see what we come up with in terms of costs. Mike?
Up to our last meeting, as Will mentioned, a majority of the speakers who spoke at our last meeting lived on Fremont Street. And council had given us some direction to look at not just the pavement deficiencies along Fremont Street, but drainage and traffic calming were two other issues that were brought up. So in your staff report, in my staff report, I did present a response to those, to those issues. For drainage, what is proposed, and Fremont is on the screen, kind of toward the right-hand side there. I don't know what the color is, is that purple? Kind of looks purple from here. We would, we would try to capture and convey the drainage from north to south along Fremont Street with an AC curb. When we install an AC curb, that means we need to modify all of the driveway approaches together with the AC curb along that west side. So we added those costs to the cost estimate. I think the cost estimate went from about $270,000 to about $517,000 is what we estimate by adding those drainage improvements. Those drainage improvements would include picking up the drainage where the road kind of turns and goes to the west and convey that over to the garden air wash. So it would not continue to go down Avenue L. That said, the other thing we looked at was traffic calming. And the concern was speeders that go down through the neighborhood, taking their kids to and from the school. Tonight, in the staff report, I indicated that I don't, I think it's premature to consider speed bumps or speed humps as part of the pavement rehabilitation project because there is some negative, negative results of implementing speed bumps. And I listed them in the staff report and I'll list them for the public here. It does increase emergency response time because the fire trucks do have to slow down to be able to go over the humps. And if they're in a hurry to respond, that is a negative, a negative impact. Secondly, it does create deceleration and acceleration noise pollution. For those who live by speed humps, you hear people hitting their brakes, they go over the hump and then they hit the gas again. So that is noise pollution that comes along with having speed humps in your neighborhood. Signs are required as part of humps, so there will be a lot more signs to warn the public that, hey, there is a speed hump coming up. So also increased pavement rehabilitation costs over time. When cars stop, they push the pavement, so pavement deteriorates at a much faster rate. So we need to think about that when we decide to implement speed humps. And then finally, I included in the staff report that utilities are impacted by this. If they have a water leak or something and there's a speed hump, there would be an extra cost to the utility to fix the speed hump after they fix their utility. So what I recommend in the staff report is to hold off on speed bumps for now. But if council really wants to take a look at it, staff could come back with a policy for council to consider as part of when they should be applied and under what circumstances. So with that, we are ready to do, I will be happy to answer any questions. I know you got to take public testimony, but we did want to do it interactive. Will has already put up on the screen here. When council selects a street, we are going to populate the spreadsheet and tell you how much money you are proposing to spend as you select projects. And I think we mentioned in the staff report, we're around $2.5 million is what's available for the program. So we're going to kind of track it as you tell us which ones you prefer. And we can't go over the $2.5 million, so many of your roof projects, add other ones in depending on council's preference. With that, I think I'm done with my report unless there's any questions.
I'm going to go ahead and real quick first.
Just a clarification question when you're done.
Okay. I drove a lot of these streets on Monday, just to look at them, I gave them a grade. And my, my thoughts were second was pretty bad and fourth had a lot of potholes. And second is the one that goes, the street that goes to the school. So I kind of was concerned about that. And then fourth, we, like I said, had quite a few potholes. And Alton off of second, the asphalt is sinking and I think that's pretty serious, it needs to be taken care of.
So Will, are you going to populate those fields as?
So second and fourth.
Second and fourth. Fourth, there's two segments on here. There's from County Line to Avenue L and then Avenue L to Myrtlewood. I think.
I think it was from.
County Line to Avenue L. Yeah. That's the one I observed as, I observed the same thing.
And then, let's see, those were the bad ones. Third street is cracking, but, you know, I'd say all our streets need some improvement, that's for sure. Fremont, I went up and looked at Fremont and there is no curb there, obviously. They're going to have a lot of problems with drainage, the water's just going to run right off and most of those houses. The edge of the asphalt is all crumbling. I'd like to see Fremont then, too.
Sorry, this thing is. I know that, come on, I can't, okay. So I'm going to hand this off over, I'm going to hand this off over to somebody that's closer to the room because I think it's just too far. So let me, let me go do that real quick.
Yeah, let me just ask, Mike, so in our staff report, the color-coded list here does not have green, but our map has green, some green streets. I think the green streets are included in segment seven, am I, am I correct or not?
I believe that the green streets are ones that we've already completed.
Because Sandalwood, Sandalwood's not done.
It was, it was highlighted in green.
And it's highlighted in green.
So I think that was a mistake. I don't know if we could bring it back up as, Yezza, are you there where you could bring the map back up?
On the map?
Oh, on the map, yeah.
On the map, that's what I, I was a little confused by that. Maybe they are the streets we did last year minus Sandalwood.
So the green streets.
Back on the map, you have the map.
I do. So, Yezza, can you bring the map back up or has Will got control? She said something. So the Sandalwood that you're referring to is over the freeway, right?
Correct.
Yes, that was part of our project and it has not been completed yet because we are working on a permit with Caltrains.
And that is part of our last year's budget to.
It's, and it's still remaining, yeah, so that's not part of the 2.5 million.
That will get done.
Yes.
It will get done.
That's not Sandalwood, that's in our.
Correct, this one is a different segment of Sandalwood. Yes, that's correct.
That's all, that was my question.
I have a comment too about Fremont when you're done. I do want to thank staff because right after, the very next day after that last council meeting, our speed monitor device was there on Fremont. And so that really does slow people down. What I've noticed with speed bumps, so many people have little cars. And when you have speed bumps, that means cars slow down even more because they're afraid of damaging their car and I think that's really not effective. But on Fremont, I think if we, because it's the least costly approach, if we manage the drainage, whatever you're going to do for the drainage, but, and stripe it because there are no, there are no, there's no centered, no centered lineage. And especially at night, it's very, very dark there. But like you have on Singleton, the signs that are illuminated at night, that might be helpful, a less costly approach to slowing people down and giving people some idea of where the road is. A lot of people, you know, speed on that curb. But thank you for addressing it right away the very next day. And it's up there again today, so.
I think our police department deserves credit for that.
Thank you very much.
Public Works, oh.
Very next day, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
So you do listen to people when they come to talk here.
Did you have something else?
I just had just a question. On Fremont, when you're talking about the curbs and the drainage, have, has the city had any specific issues that they dealt with in the past as far as the drainage goes on Fremont itself compared to other cities? I know like, obviously like Bryant where we had major issues, but are there specific issues that have occurred that the city's had to deal with as far as the drainage goes?
Historically, and Darlene may know better than I, if we've received any claims about drainage damage that has occurred, but when you go out and look at it, you can see water does leave the public right-of-way onto private property in that area. And the three residents that testified, three of the residents that testified at our last meeting said that they had been flooded. That was their testimony last time. So I believe there is a history of it, but it hasn't been an issue, at least to what I'm aware of. I can ask Public Works if they had to go up to clean up anything after a rain event, nothing on Fremont. So I guess the answer to your question is, there probably is a problem, but we haven't received a lot of complaints.
Okay, thank you.
So Margaret, if I could ask, when we populate a cell on the selected side, can we just let it equal the amount next to it rather than put a yes?
No, that's not, that's not the way, above that, Mike, you see there's a budget up there?
Yes.
It's, it's counting up all the yeses all next to those. That's to make it easier so we don't have to type the entire amount in.
Okay, sorry about that.
So my understanding, at least the way that I thought of this, was that we were looking to do pavement management within various color segments because that was more cost-effective. Is that, am I mistaken by thinking that way?
So, so we did group them by, by area so that the contractor could give us a better price. If he has to move around the city, we would anticipate that, yes, that would create some more cost. But you're not restricted by that. I think if you have like two streets in pink and a street in orange and a street in blue, you're certainly welcome to do that. It does add just a little bit of cost, but the idea, oops.
Well, we're a pretty small city, so. It shouldn't be that.
Yeah, again, generally, I mean, this equipment has to move from street to street, even in the neighborhood anyway. So.
I just think, I think I remember council member manly answering, asking that question. And so the way that I was thinking about it was, it was more cost-effective. We were trying to do it within color segments, but not a problem. If we don't need to do that, then we have more latitude in making decisions, so that's fine.
It could assist in, you know, when there's money available, if we go, okay, we want to do these segments. And then if, you know, it's still within the budget to add the rest of those segments, if the council concurs with that, obviously we can do that. I think maybe trying to ferret out some of the priority areas first is helpful to then have us, help us dial into those areas that we want to do.
And these ones that I'm talking about are pretty close.
So, so did we get all of Wendy's list?
Well.
Can you repeat that again? I have it on my computer too, yeah.
I gave you a grade on everything, but I think Holmes was like a five or a six. There's potholes on that one also. Like I said, Alton is just really needs to be done.
So your criteria was, you were going just by needs base, not by.
I gave him a one to 10 rating. And although I traveled Douglas a couple times, I didn't feel like it needed to be done at this time. And I know that our city manager actually said there was some drainage issues there that we might have to address at the corner there. So if, if that needs to be put in there, I mean, I don't know how much that would cost.
For which one, I'm sorry?
For Douglas.
This is to do the storm drain system on the south end of the, of the, of the, of the street. Yeah, so I don't know if we, yeah, so we, the county did a flood control project probably about 12 years ago, 10, 12 years ago maybe, Mike. And the, there was some sit-ins issues on Avenue L that the county addressed earlier, you know, sometime in 2023. And so that same work was all done with a storm drain that the city owns. Because the city takes responsibility for all storm drains 36 inches and under. So the one on Douglas is 36 inches, so that is our responsibility. That's why the county went in and fixed that section of Avenue L because it was a larger than 36-inch storm drain. We expect that we'll have similar challenges with the one on Douglas. That's why we included Douglas on the list, so yes. And that could be, you know, an alternative could be to just include that segment of Douglas. That would be subject to, to that. But again, that can also be done as its own separate project later. You know, having a contractor out and including that segment obviously would probably save cost in the long run. But I guess it just depends on where the, where the priorities lie and where the budget ends up based on the, those priorities.
So can we ask you to kind of summarize your list again just to make sure we had all of the ones that you suggested so that the rest of the council knows where we are, at least with your list?
Second and fourth. Now that was between, that, when we say County Line.
County Line and Avenue L, yep.
And Alton, which is off of second. Fremont, I think we need to look at that and see what we can do and how much it's going to cost us.
So Fremont, I would say with Fremont, you want to do the Avenue L segment between Fremont and 400 feet west, the one that's right below it as well, because that's kind of all related. So we want to make sure, because that'll make sure that all that, that area gets taken care of.
I think the one that you're selling on now, you need to put a Y there and the one.
No, no, that one's, that one's without the, the one that's the cells in now is without the curb and drainage improvements. The one below it with the yes includes the curb and gutter.
So down two cells.
So go down two cells and then, yeah, one more. Not that, that one's good, and then include that one also. Yeah, there you go.
And, I mean, what are we up to?
So we did, we had second, fourth, Alton and Fremont.
That's 1.5 million already.
How much do we have?
About a million left.
Any, did you guys use any other criteria when you were judging or trying to assess? Were you just going off which streets needed it the most or did you think about it in terms of like traffic at all, most traffic streets?
Well, traffic-wise, I'd say County Line needs to be fixed, but I know we have a water line going in there, so we're kind of waiting on them.
That's an ongoing project, yeah. County Line's an ongoing project, yeah.
And Calamaesa Boulevard, we're looking at other options to get that done, so.
It's difficult right now because there was so much damage from the, from the weather this last six months. And so that's really complicated, the conditions of the streets. They were bad before that. And so that, I think that's something we need to look at as well. Some streets have deteriorated even more than they were.
Well, that's why I went out there and drove out there to look at everything and what, you know, what was really bad.
Well, that's why I went out there and drove out there to look at everything and what, you know, what was really bad.
So these, these scores are, they have, they're, they haven't changed since we, since we gave them those scores, since we've had bad weather, those.
Correct, yeah. The, those are done, I think the PCI is done, best practice every, how, how often does that happen?
So we try to do it every five years, but nothing has been done for the last five years.
Yeah, so the, these, these scores and, and part of our budget, just so kind of give you your preview for next year, we're going to budget for up, doing an updated PCI analysis as part of our, our pavement management program to update these numbers. The other thing that has happened in the industry over the last few years is there's been newer technology that has come out to more accurately assess. As a matter of fact, we were just talking with City of Utauba last week. Obviously they have some road challenges as well. And they, they recently completed their PCI analysis and the scores came in a lot lower than they had expected. So, you know, with new technology, they're able to kind of go, you know, look at things a little more deep, more detailed with it, with higher res cameras and things like that. And so, you know, these numbers will obviously up, be updated from that. But we don't have that information available yet and that takes cost and time. So we kind of go by, you know, it's, this is, the PCI is a piece of information to use to make decisions. But certainly, you know, obviously just driving out there and, and kind of the eye test is obviously helpful as well.
I think because we don't have enough money to do all the streets, it might be a good idea to maybe do drive-bys and, and in places where the roads have deteriorated even more. Make a note of that.
Well, and that's kind of what the, that's why we presented this list, because this list was going to try to encompass those. And then, you know, that's why we wanted to bring, bring this back. Cause we do, the next step is going to be, once we have the, the segments selected, we still have to then do the design and, because we have to figure out where all the utilities are and everything like that to put a big package together for contractors to come in and do the work, which will take a few months. So we want to try to, you know, get that work going. So that's why we're, we're asking, that's one of the reasons we're, are asking for direction.
Will, so are we going to, every year, allocate a sizable amount of money to pavement management? Or I know for the last two years, a significant amount of this money came from the, the tranches, from the.
From the American Rescue Plan.
American Rescue Plan.
Yes.
Now moving forward, are we going to try to do the same amount of money or what do we?
It's going to become much more difficult to do that. As a matter of fact, again, that's why, one of the reasons that we are going to do the PCI examination rather than probably recommend additional paving is to, number one, allow us to accumulate some additional funds to do projects. And number two, to get more accurate data, or at least I shouldn't say accurate, should more updated data. So it, but the funding is definitely a challenge. And this also, you know, keep in mind too, not only does it include a significant investment from American Rescue Plan, about a million dollars is coming from the general fund as well. So it's not a huge amount that's coming from Measure A, because our Measure A allocation's only about $320,000 a year. It's not a lot and it's not going to get you very far in terms of allocation for paving roads. Cause usually if you have anything less than a million dollars, you just don't get that economy of scale for, for doing significant work, unfortunately. And so those are the decisions we have to make with the, you know, with the precious dollars that we do have. So going forward, the funding strategy is going to be a big challenge for us. Certainly one that we're, we're going to be looking at what our options are. But after those, those, you know, million dollars a year for A, for the ARP money is gone, obviously we're going to have to figure out a way to replace that.
Yeah.
Will, I have a question as well. Are any of these street projects impacted by RCTC? Are these just, are these just projects that we are taking and, and addressing?
These are just local projects, no RCTC involvement. And I don't believe RCTC money is going to be involved because they are only funding, you know, capacity enhancement and things like that. They're not doing, yeah.
There's major changes with RCTC right now, so.
Right.
That's, that's, that's good news.
Yeah, no, it's no, no RCTC money. It's, you know, like I said, our, our primary funding sources going forward is going to be Measure A and general fund. And, cause even gas tax, gas tax is basically used for maintenance, so pothole repair, things like that. That's what we use that for.
I just wanted to clarify, RCTC is a county entity, Riverside Transportation Commission, for those of you who don't know. And they, and if they, if they're involved in a project approval, it's major time commitment and competitiveness, so. The fact that that's not happening here, that's, that's good news.
I think I'll take a shot at this, you know. Let's give you my take on it. I was kind of focusing on, just because it's limited the funds, but some of the residential streets, because I think those were some of the, the worst streets. A lot of them were some of these smaller, smaller, less traveled streets and some of these cul-de-sacs. So I was focusing on some of those areas that just tried to cross off some of the worst streets that are, that are left. That was primarily my focus. So I do think though, on Second Street was pretty high up there. I know a lot of them are very comparable, you know, they're in very similar conditions. But I thought Second Street and especially those two cul-de-sacs are pretty bad. So I would probably, if we were going to do Second Street, I probably would add that Fisher Court, because that's the other cul-de-sac. Cause I thought Fisher and Alton both were in terrible shape, probably worse than, than Second, but, so.
So it's segment, yeah, there it is.
Yeah, those, so it'd be those three streets. I think that's definitely worth considering, those three.
And, and I, I just, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to clarify from your list, Mayor Protem, you also had said Home Street as well, correct?
I.
Or did you want to include that?
It's horrible. But I, I don't want to complain because that's my street and I don't want anybody to think that I'm asking for preferential treatment, but it's bad. I rated it five or six. It has a few potholes on it. I mean, yeah, it needs to be done too, so.
So let's go ahead and go down to that line. It's about two below Avenue L's, yes there, so.
Will, I have another question.
Well, there's two Home Streets.
I, I know we have another.
There's Home Street and Homeway, Homeway.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we're talking about Home Street, yeah. I know, I had to make sure that, I asked that question too.
We have a, a project that's coming up that's off of Holmes, it's on Holmes Way actually. Is there any way of possibly getting that developer for that development? Because I'm not sure if they're going to be, the people, it's, it's a housing project. If the people are going to be directed to Holmes, from Holmes Way to Holmes? Or they're going to be actually directed to County Line?
So.
Is that a possibility for maybe funding? I don't know.
So those, the traffic from that development will be going up to County Line?
Oh, County Line, okay. That's, that's good too.
Not Holmes Way, Margaret, I think it was Home Street.
Just Home Street, yeah.
Yeah, not that one, yeah. John, did you have a couple more recommendations?
So, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry about that, Councilmember.
I'm starting to put, we agreed on, I'll start with that, so.
Yeah, there you go. He's going to get more confrontation on that note.
Uh, I think Avenue B actually is one, I thought the worst street. That was my top ranked worst street, Avenue B.
Well, that was rated a 46, I think, too.
But as Linda pointed out, some of these, you know, as time has gone over, the ratings aren't, you know, there are, some are worse shape than the, the PCI indicates, you know, from this list. So it doesn't exact, it's close, but some of it doesn't quite match up. Some have deteriorated a lot more than others, but. Happened to be, that's just a small little street just over there by itself, but I thought that was the worst street in the whole city. And then the other, the last kind of segment I was focused on was where we kind of did a lot of the work this last time. So some of the red streets, so in segment seven, so some of those, some of those smaller streets were, I think some of the worst streets as well, so. Ponderosa Trail, Lone Star Court, and then Nugget Court. Golden Spur. Yeah, Golden, yeah, I'm trying to just pick out some of these here. Uh, yeah, Golden Spur Court, Canyon View Drive, so. I think if, if we wanted to try to break it up, because there's a lot of streets there, Sandalwood itself is not as bad as some of these little side streets. And there's other streets that are as bad in other places to where I think you could, if we didn't need to do it all together, take out Sandalwood and then actually Bell as well. Just, it's just the, the cul-de-sac part of, of Bell, just the very end, the very southern end of Bell, off of Canyon View. That's really the worst part of, of Bell, so you could probably leave most of Bell and Sandalwood off. And then do the remaining little streets and then Ponderosa. So I think that, that group is, is probably the other worst spot of, of streets. And I think I, I could, you know, stop there and give you guys an opportunity to throw some other things you think in there.
So I, I have the sheet open on my computer too, just so I was making sure that we can match up and have this for, for later. That puts us at about 290,000 over, at where we are right now, over budget, so.
Think you could take out, or as far as what I was saying, you could probably take Bell out?
Yeah, I don't have, I, I just, I did not include Bell and Sandalwood in that.
Okay.
I think, yeah, so I think Bell, yeah, so Bell, take, take that one out and then add Spur Court, correct?
Right, yeah.
Sandalwood's already good. Sandalwood's good. It's not already, it's already not, nope.
Yeah, that's it.
That's Canyon View. You're on Canyon View right now and that was a yes. Yep.
And then the one above it.
And then the one above it. Yes, yes.
Gold Spur, correct. So there's your 290?
Yeah, so we're at about 2.8 million dollars for those and we have 5.2, 2.5 budgeted, so we're just shy of 300,000.
Just, sorry.
Yep.
Um, the last part, as far as Fremont goes, is my take on that would be if we wanted to do that street, I'll probably just take out the curb aspect and the, and also the speed bump, just, just what we have, just what we have listed on here with Avenue L, as you mentioned. I think it makes sense to do those two pieces together, but I think I would have, just given the limited funds that we have, I would just exclude the extras on it if we wanted to do it.
So that would take it down about 250,000, so we'd just be down to about 43,000 over budget, if we were to do that.
So, John, what were you saying? Take the, the Y off of Fremont 3B?
And put it with 3A.
Did you already fix it?
Just put the Y, just, just do 3A?
Um, let me see.
According to this spreadsheet?
Yeah, so 3B is with the curb and drainage improvements.
I'm saying, yeah, no curb, no improvements.
Move the Y from, take it off of 3B and then put it on 3A?
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes.
And let's see what the numbers come out to.
So the 517, you're right, right above where your mouse is. Take the Y out of that one and then put it on the one above it, yeah. Correct.
And that, we should be pretty close when we do that. Can we, no, well, hold on.
Yep, that's right.
Is that correct?
Yes. Cause yeah, the, the cursor's covering the Y, but it's there. Yeah, there we go, there we go.
That's a lot closer, or I mean?
Or still over a little bit?
Is that reasonable for now or should we try to trim a street off of there?
So what we can do is, we certainly can, you know, take this and, you know, $43,000 is, I think, a gap we can probably, you know, if we want to just. The other, the other aspect is, once the work is done at Sandalwood, there's a chance that, I think because of the way we, our budget came out with our contract with Harding and Harper, plus design costs, I think we actually came in a little under budget anyway for last year. That money would carry over, so we certainly could use money to the extent it's, it's available. And $43,000 is something we can probably invest a little bit of general fund money on. And again, these are estimates, so the, the bids could come in more favorably as well. Or they could come in high. We don't know until we do it. But if they come in favorably, then everything should work on that. So we can certainly go with the list that we have here.
Will, I have a question. The money for signs for streets, is that a different pot of money than the road, the, the road work?
Yeah, we don't have any money budgeted specifically for signs. When I had brought that up during our strategic plan update, the, the thought was more about just updating the design of it so that when sign, sign replacement is required, that we would just update it with a new sign standard, with the new logo and everything like that. There's a really low cost in designing a new sign. It's just then would be something we'd do on an ad hoc basis and for new development. So as new development goes in, they would get new signage and then as signs are replaced, we would use the new sign standard.
I'm, I'm talking about signs like to slow down.
Oh, like just regular, yeah, those are, those are different, that's a different, that's a different.
Cause I think that, that might be a good solution for Fremont, especially on the curb, because at night it's very dark there. There's some very dark, I mean, the, the street lights don't cover that curb very well. And if we had a sign that said, "Slow down," and like we have a sign on Singleton for the stop signs with the flashing lights, that'll get people to see that and might get them to slow down. I don't think speed bumps would work on that, on Fremont. But I think that would be a cost effective way to slow people down and make them aware of that, that dangerous curve and get them to slow down.
And actually on that point, we are looking at, you know, we had talked about, you know, Mike talked about doing a speed bumps policy. Another policy we've been looking at is flashing stop signs as well and when those would be appropriate. And not like this flashing beacon like we have at Avenue K and Calamaise Boulevard. Talking about the ones with the, with the LED border. But they also do make caution signs that have that yellow border as well. And they can be, I believe some of them are even motion activated, so they don't flash all the time. They only flash when traffic is approaching. So that kind of gets people's more attention more because it's not just constantly flashing. It kind of gets lost in the background. It only flashes when cars are approaching. So that's certainly something that we can look at as part of that. And that, it sounds, you know, just based on, you know, the, you know, the, the testimony we've heard, that could be a good solution.
Are those solar, um, solar?
Those are solar powered, yes. Yes.
So are we then good on the street thing and for now?
If the council is in agreement, the segments that we have outlined as yeses, we can go ahead and, and run with those and design them. And then the next time you'll see this is when we approve the specs for bid.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mayor and Councilmember reporting of county and regional meetings. John?
I don't have anything further. I didn't attend any meetings.
I have a list. You want me to go last?
Yeah, I'll be brief. So I have a brief report for RCA. And I, I think I reported back in May that the RCA board, we directed staff to conduct a study to, for the, to evaluate the MSHCP in ways that it could be improved. And so the staff, RCA staff has now officially moving forward with that process to identify pathways to improve the MSHC implementation and particularly to focus on the HANS process, which is a very cumbersome and intricate, convoluted process in some ways. And so what was decided was we awarded an agreement to a consultant who's going to be a consultant for the, who's a professional habitat conservation consultant. And we're going to hire them for two years to help us to evaluate the plan. And throughout the process and concluding the process, hopefully we can identify ways that we can improve the process and the plan without having to make real substantive overhauls, but maybe some tweaks here and there to improve it. Cause really intricate substantive improvements is, would require a, a lot of agencies and a lot of input from a lot of places. And it may be impossible at this point, but we'll see as we begin the process. At least we're starting the process to see what, how we can improve the plan. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay. Linda, you can go.
Okay. On, on January 4th, I participated in a SCAG transportation policy meeting. Instead of driving to LA, I did a Zoom from the Hemet office. And then on the 8th, I participated in another Zoom meeting for RCTC Projects and Ad-Hoc Committee. And we discussed projects that we're looking at this year. RCTC is going to have a two-day planning session in the desert in, in a couple of weeks. Then on the 8th, Will, Darlene and I, God bless you. Will, Darlene and I attended the Riverside, the Cal Cities Riverside Division Dinner Meeting in Norco. And it was at the Hidden Valley Golf Course.
was at the Hidden Valley Golf Course and we also had, uh, tours were provided by, to the attendees of Disney's 3D Ranch, it's uh where they have the horses that participate at the resort. And so we were able to to see that. And so Darlene and I, poor Darlene, Darlene and I will be attending at least five more meetings this year since um I'm I'm president of Riverside County uh Division for um Cal Cities. So thank you, Darlene, for for that work and um, then I'm also attended on the 9th, Cal Mesa Chamber Breakfast, the guest speaker was very informative. On on January 10th, um, RCTC had the commission meeting where they discussed routine matters. On the 10th as well, RTA had their two committee meetings, admin and operations, budget and finance, those also were routine uh meetings. Um, on the 12th, uh, Crafton Hills, uh, at Crafton Hills, uh, they had the ribbon cutting for the Public Safety uh Training Center. Uh, Jeff and I both attended that and they were very complimentary of Chief O'Connell and the support you've given. Dr. Heron mentioned you personally, so he said you were very helpful to us. Um, on January 13th, uh, the Cal Mesa Breakfast Lions Club had our coat drive, it's called Melvin Jones. Last year, we collected over 400 coats and sweaters for people who who in need. This year, um, we're going to be counting them here at the senior center next Monday. Um, we'll have a follow up story, we probably collected over 300. Um, on the 15th, um, our our Lions Club, the same Lions Club, we do our American Flag Program, so on a 12 days a year, you probably see flags on the Boulevard. Um, those, that's a, that's a Lions Club project and we are promoting patriotism and it's a a project for us and for $35 a year, you can have a flag put in front of your home or business. Um, the 25th and 26th, I mentioned, RCTC is having the annual workshop in Palm Springs. On the 20th, uh, in Beaumont at the Chetney Center from nine to one is the Vet Expo. I I volunteer there, it's a volun, uh, veterans, family and friends. They've been doing this, I don't know, how many years, how many years, Jeff? 10 or 15 years that I can think of. Um, it's very, it's very, it's all information for veterans. Um, and then on the 24th and 26th, uh, the same time as the RCTC workshop, um, Cal Cities is having their Mayor and New Council Members Academy in Monterey. And thank you, Michael.
Thank you, you've been busy.
City manager comments and report, Will.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Um, the California Residential Mitigation Program has announced its registration period for 2024 for the earthquake, earthquake brace and bolt program. Uh, pro eligibility is determined by zip code. Um, approximately 300 new zip codes were added to the program this year, including 92320, meaning Cal Mesa residents can now participate in the program. Program offers grants of up to $3,000 to be used for to fortify homes against earthquakes, especially those built before 1980 and located in the high hazard areas, which I think in California is pretty much every square inch of California. I think Blythe is the, one of the areas that doesn't get a lot of earthquakes, but um, there are also supplemental grants awarded up to an additional $7,000 for households with an annual income at or below $87,360. The application period opened last Tuesday, January 10th, and will run through February 21st. For more information and to register for the program, visit earthquakebracebolt.com. And then lastly, um, I, after a few months off, um, I did another podcast episode and it was actually about how our city council meetings work. So I kind of just went through from start to finish the anatomy of a city council meeting, how it works and really it was, the the purpose was to ensure that the public understood how the, how it works and how they participate, how they can participate in in various different parts of the of the meeting, um, to ensure that their voices are heard. So um, I know that, you know, it's, it's always, you know, nice to see new people come to the city council meetings participating and so sometimes it can be a little bit overwhelming, a little bit intimidating, so um, I highly recommend listening to that that episode because I think it'll hopefully maybe give them a little, you know, embolden them a little bit to be able to participate uh more or better in the future. So uh, check it out, that can be reached at cityofcalamesa.net/podcast. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you, Will. And I just want to thank everybody for coming and thank our Assistant City Attorney, Stephanie Cow, and I'm sorry I screwed up on your name today. And that's it, adjourned. Thank you.